Good evening. And welcome to the Huntington Beach City Candidates, not Council this time, Forum for 2014. We're so glad that all of you have so much interest in what's going on in the community and that all of our candidates are willing to be here tonight and share their ideas with you and give you a chance to hear their thinking. We'd like to thank all the volunteers from the League of Women Voters in Orange Coast, which is co-hosting this forum with volunteers from Huntington Beach Chapter of the American Association of University Women, and also the city of Huntington Beach, which has been extremely helpful in offering this venue, serving as a place to submit questions, announcing it on the city website, and then making the arrangements for HPTV3 to be here. And the film from tonight will be shown regularly on TV from now until the election, and I think also available through a link on the city website. My name is Becky Newman, and I'm the representative of the League of Women Voters. And I'm going to start the evening by lobbing something that maybe you did already. Getting something out of my pocket, and guess what it is? Please turn it off. Unless your daughter is in labor or your mother is very ill, then please put it on vibrate. So we have a lot of candidates tonight, and so we want to make the most of the time that you have available to us. We're asking people not to record in any way. We all carry little recording devices these days, but there'll be an official film, and that will show us exactly what happened here tonight, and so we'd like to limit it to that. If you will do that, please. Now I'm going to introduce Karen Jakel, who is my partner in crime from the American Association of University Women, a racehorse of this evening. Karen?
Good evening. I'm Karen Jakel, Public Policy Chair of the Westminster Fountain Valley Huntington Beach Ranch of AAW, American Association of University Women. We are co-sponsors of tonight's forum. The AAW mission is advancing equity for women and girls through advocacy, education, philanthropy, and research. Membership is open to people who hold an associate degree or higher. Now please stand in my legion and pledge allegiance. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Karen, statements about membership in the AAW reminded me that the League of Women Voters is also a membership organization, and some members of the League of Women Voters, such as my husband, are men. So we do not exclude you, and we've had an ongoing conversation about whether we should change our name. But it hasn't been that long we've had the vote, guys, and we still feel very strongly about being the leading voters. So there you are. Okay. A couple of things that you need to know, and this is kind of like that essay you have to write in high school. We tell you what we're going to tell you, and then we tell you again, and then we do it. So basically, the forum will work like this. We have two different offices represented tonight, the city attorneys, for which there are two candidates, and the city council members, for which we have actually 11 candidates in the city, but Mr. Hector Valdez is ill, as you probably know if you saw his sign in the other room. And so he's saving the rest of us from getting whatever he's got and did not come this evening. So there'll be 10 council candidates. We will do the forum in two parts. We'll start with the city attorneys and do their entire section, and then they will leave. They may well have other things to do in the city, or they can join the audience since they voted in Huntington Beach. And then we'll do the city council candidates. In each section of the forum, the candidates will have an opportunity to make opening statements, which they have prepared. They will each have two minutes to do that. For the questions section of the forum, our moderator will ask the questions, and each candidate will have one minute or up to one minute to respond. Then, at the end of their section of the forum, the city attorney candidates, and then in their turn, the city council candidates, will have one minute each to make a prepared closing statement or opposing statement that they will probably write on the hoof based on what gets said this evening. So we're good to see how well they can adjust themselves to changing circumstances. We have two timers this evening. My husband Riley Newman is the assistant timer, and our lead timer is Diane Lott. They are both lead, they are both members of the League of Women Voters in Orange Coast. And they will be using a pattern signaling system. When the candidate has 30 seconds, if there are a lot of time left, we'll raise the paddle and possibly stand up. We're going to see how well you see that was there. When your timer is up, there will be a red paddle, and we really hope that you will finish your sentence, and I mean a short sentence, not a paragraph, and let us get on to the next candidate. Other than that, it's pretty uncomplicated, and we have a very experienced operator. You'll probably recognize her. She's done several years for the city of Huntington Beach. So without further ado, let me present Marcia Garten, who is our evening's moderator. Thank you all for coming this evening. It is my privilege to be here tonight, and I'm so happy to see a wonderful room. And of course, let's give our candidates a round of applause. As was mentioned previously, I'm going to review candidates. We'll answer questions when called upon. We'll have one minute to respond in the question portion. The timers will hold up a yellow card when you have 30 seconds left, and a red card. Mr. Newman will be standing up with a red card at the end, just to get your attention. And if you could please just finish your last sentence, we'd greatly appreciate it. We have so many questions this evening, and we really want to get through them all. We ask that the audience replay from applause until the end, and also to be respectful. We have many, many volunteers here and want to get through this evening's agenda. With each question, I will be starting with a different person, and hopefully if we have enough questions, each of you will have a chance to go first. That's the most important part. So now, further ado, let us go ahead and begin with opening statements. And let us begin. Names were drawn previously as to the sequence of order that's being presented, and carefully recorded, of course. So let's have Mr. O'Connell go ahead and begin with your opening.
No, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Oh, gosh, I'm so sorry. A thousand apologies. This is a combination event, which is different. Usually, we just have one. So we'll go ahead and begin with the city attorney's office. Mr. O'Connell will just have to sit patiently if you don't mind. And I have that here. So again, the city attorney's office will begin the part one. The second part will be the city council. Thank you for supporting the success here. So opening comments will be two minutes, and the winner of the selection was Mr. Gates. Would you like to begin, please?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for allowing the city attorney candidates to join the forum. I know that originally it wasn't part of the forum, but I particularly appreciate your invitation. I've grown up in Huntington Beach my whole life. I went to grade school here. We're in a high school, graduated in 1993. Then out of Pepperdine University, and then Chapman Law School. I've been married for 17 years. I have five children. My wife and I want to retire here. We have properties here in Huntington Beach. We want our children to grow up here. I have owned two businesses in Huntington Beach. I've managed resources both internally and externally for those businesses. They've profited, they've thrived. I'm currently a partner at a law firm in the county of Orange, representing the Orange County Sheriff's Department, the county of Orange itself, and the district attorney's office, among other clients, including large-scale trucking companies and private schools. I have a whole host of experience, and the reason I'm running for Huntington Beach City Attorney is because I believe we may need a change. I'm the only candidate endorsed by the Orange County Register. I'm the only candidate endorsed by the Orange County District Attorney, Tony Rukakis. I'm the only candidate endorsed by Dana Warbacher, Jim Silva, Travis Allen, Alan Mansour, Don Wagner, Diane Harkey, and the list goes on. I'm endorsed by over 60 endorsements. I'm endorsed by multiple organizations. I'm endorsed by over 20 lawyers who recommend me for this office, and I believe that I can make a good positive change for the city of Huntington Beach.
Thank you, Mr. Gates. Mrs. Garten?
Thank you as well for including the city attorney candidates. I've been the city attorney for the city of Huntington Beach for 12 years. This is my hometown. In 1994, when I couldn't find a job at that point in time, was still a law clerk or in law school, I ran into the city attorney's office and really didn't know what a city attorney did. I realize that's probably what many of you think. So hopefully, I can enlighten you on what the city attorney's office provides. In 1996, I became an entry-level attorney, and as I said, I was elected in 2002. I proudly served for 12 years and look for your vote to serve for another four. In addition to that, I'm proudly endorsed by all the two of the mayors that I have served with since 2002. And those mayors represent diverse parts of this community, not just one party, not just one segment, not just one part of town. So I'm very proud of those endorsements. When I first got elected, I restructured the office immediately. Having been in the office, I understood that we had some problems with too many masters. So I created an advisory division and a litigation division. At that time, I had 19 staff members. Based on the recession, I now have 11 staff members. Six attorneys, three of which provide advisory advice to the city council, to over 900 employees, and the department heads. They draft all of the ordinances, the resolutions, the contracts, the environmental documents, and approve all of the bonds and insurance for the city of Huntington Beach on a daily basis. The other three attorneys are in the litigation division, and they represent the city in defense of your typical claims, such as trip and fall, traffic collisions. With 900 employees, obviously, as a corporation, the city of Huntington Beach is going to get sued and sued frequently. We are sued, we have approximately 45 cases on an annual basis. And I'm proud to say, last year, the attorneys settled 60% of those cases, or resolved 60% of those cases, with no money being spent by the public.
Thank you so much. We'll begin the questions now. Question number one, we'll go to Mrs. Garten, and has to do with the responsibility as a city attorney. This is a three-part question, so we'll go slowly. What do you consider as the most important function of the city attorney's office? What has prepared you for this role? And what three priorities would you have if elected? It's a three-part portion, so the first part, I can go through again. What do you consider as the most important functions of the city attorney's office? Part one. Part two, what has prepared you for this role? Part three, what three priorities would you have if elected? And you have one minute. Okay, that's approximately, how many seconds each? 20 seconds. The most important function for the city attorney's office in the city of Huntington Beach as an elected office is to be the watchdog of taxpayer dollars. It's to ensure that neutral, nonpartisan legal advice is provided to the city council so that they make solid decisions that don't waste taxpayer time either in court or other remedies. My experience, obviously, I've been in the city since 1994. I've been an attorney for 18 and a half years, and this has been my primary focus as we discuss the law. I love what I do, and I enjoy it every day. The three top priorities for me will really focus more on building the office back to what it was. We have a phenomenal staff that does a phenomenal amount of work, but we really do need some assistance in some other support areas. We also need to have some training that needs to be done. With reduced staff, we can't provide the same level of training that we've done before. And we have some additional plans that we'd like to implement. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Gates, would you like me to repeat the question?
Should I get the same question?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. I will answer the question.
Thank you.
Thank you. The city attorney is responsible for doing the law for the city, advising the council, defending the city from litigation, public safety, supporting the police and the fire. So it's really multifaceted. There's a couple areas that I think are most important right now, one of which is public safety. You know, we've heard a lot about public drunkenness downtown. You've even seen, if you've watched the city council, some of the measures that were taken to pass permits and other things. And the city attorney's office has not done enough historically, especially in recent years, to support the law enforcement. There are citations that go unprosecuted in the city attorney's office. I'm going to prosecute those citations. There are additional measures that could be taken to support the police, like adding civil citations to the 647F violations, which is the criminal. I would like to see that happen in Huntington Beach. I've been working with Tony Rukakis already, talking about the changes that need to be made in Huntington Beach, and Tony Rukakis has offered Huntington Beach a special task force just to prosecute citations and violations of downtown for public drunkenness. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gates. Question number two goes to Mr. Gates. What relationship should the city attorney have with law enforcement and city council members, and how do you plan to maintain those relationships?
So the city attorney's office, as I mentioned in my previous answer, is responsible for prosecuting citations. And there are a number of areas. I mentioned public drunkenness is one of them. We can work with the county to prosecute citations so that drugs are simply not put in taxi cabs and sent home. Law enforcement, police officers, believe it or not, ladies and gentlemen, do a fantastic job in Huntington Beach. Having worked for the Orange County Sheriff's Department, they tell me that Huntington Beach is top-notch. But the Huntington Beach Police Force needs to support the city attorney to add teeth to enforcement. We need teeth to enforcement to crack down on public drunkenness downtown. We should not shift the burden to businesses. We shouldn't be shutting them down at 10 o'clock at night in order to increase public safety. We need to give the support to the police officers to increase public safety. Medical marijuana dispensaries go free every day in Huntington Beach without being prosecuted by the city attorney's office. Every day, the police are out there trying to enforce the law, yet the city attorney's office has not been there to help prosecute those citations.
Thank you, Mr. Gates. Mrs. Garten?
With one minute, I don't have enough time to address what was indicated. Public drunkenness is a serious situation, and what we can't do is cause a civil citation to happen. It is a district attorney violation to be prosecuted, not a city attorney job. In addition to that, we are actively working on medical marijuana dispensaries. We've shut down one. We're shutting down another, and we just served the third. It's not something that you can arrest when they're not even letting you in the door. As for the basic relationship between law enforcement and the city attorney's office, we help prosecute the cases, we help draft the laws, and we help support them when they're trying to do an investigation, whether it's a massage parlor, medical marijuana establishment, or even situations in the downtown. As far as the relationship with city council, I think I mentioned it earlier, that the relationship between council and law enforcement community is still to provide the advice to city council and give the support to law enforcement. If ultimately, city council makes those policy decisions, as well as decision on where resources are dedicated, whether it's downtown or whether it's in another part of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Garten. The next question goes to Mrs. Garten. Should the monetary cost of a lawsuit be the main reason for settling, or are there other considerations? One minute.
Obviously, monetary cost is not the only consideration. There's issues relative to what are we representing, and what is the principle we're standing for. The reality, though, is it's taxpayer dollars. And when I make a recommendation to city council as to whether we're going to actively defend a case, it needs to be a decision that also takes into account the risk to taxpayer dollars. You don't take a case to trial that may risk a more significant loss than if you actually settled the case for less than it would cost to defend. So they're all balanced decisions. Monetary is one of them. Principle is another. In addition to that, it depends on who the plaintiffs are. When you have a lawsuit where there's three police officers suing in conjunction with the city council, you have to be sure that you take care of their interests. It's something that's very horrible for a police officer to be involved in, is an officer involved shooting. And most of them, if they're lucky, never have it, but if they have it, they have it only once. And it's my office's job to make sure that they feel comfortable in testifying, and that they feel that they've been exonerated in court when we win a trial. Thank you. Mr. Gates?
Thank you. In spite of the efforts on the city attorney's office to litigate and defend the city, I can tell you that the city attorney has settled 15 cases involving the police department that involved false arrest, excessive force or other force-type-related violations. These cases have cost taxpayers $1.7 million. In contrast, I've represented the county of Orange and Orange County Sheriff's Department. I can tell you that I've never paid a dime on a sheriff's case. Why? Because at our law firm, we defend cases, period. And the decision to settle comes in when a case is presented and there's potential exposure for the defendant. There's potential exposure. But in Huntington Beach, we have a pattern and a history of settling lawsuits. Over the past 10 years, we've spent over $10 million of your taxpayer money settling lawsuits, like for instance, $50,000 for non-lethal use of force, false arrest, $50,000, policeman stalks, $70,000, false arrest, $400,000.
Thank you, Mr. Gates. Thank you. Unfortunately, I don't mean to cut you off, but you need to move forward. We're now at the point for closing statements, and Mrs. Garten, you get to do your closing statement first.
Karen admits the quickest forum we've had yet, and our last, thankfully. I'd like to leave you with the four reasons why I think I should be re-elected. I'm running on my record. It's a public record. You can all verify any of the statements that my opponent has made. I'm not going to, again, say I respectfully discurry. I think that I have a demonstrated record of saving taxpayer dollars, of not having frivolous lawsuits that cost the city any money. I do think that I do provide law and partisan-like legal advice, and I think that is why I have the endorsements of the mayors and city council members that I do. I also believe that it's continuity. You know, the cases that are either making you happy or making you sad, whether it's a senior center or a Bolsa Chica or a medical marijuana dispensary. I've been here doing a job for 18-plus years. I have the institutional knowledge, the relationships in City Hall, and the relationships outside of City Hall to continue to represent the city of Huntington Beach. Lastly, I leave you with the fact that I've been managing a law office for 12 years. There are six attorneys. Thank you.
That's difficult. I appreciate your patience. Mr. Gates?
And I'm running for a change. I'm a concerned Huntington Beach resident, like many of you. I'm a taxpayer here, and I'm frankly tired of seeing our tax dollars spent on settling frivolous lawsuits and excessive settlements. As I said, over $10 million of our taxpayer money has gone to settlements. I'm also interested in helping public safety. I think that shifting the burden of public safety to other sectors is not necessary. If the public, if the Huntington Beach Police Department had the proper support of the city attorney's office, we would have better law enforcement. We would have better public safety. The senior center, it's a perfect example. I've got the opinion from the Court of Appeal right in front of me. The Court of Appeal, as you know, the senior center's been delayed in large part because of the litigation, because the litigation wasn't handled properly. If I were the city attorney, the senior center would have been far further along in its development. The Court of Appeal literally cites the city for mishandling the case, causing delays. When I'm city attorney, I'm going to make sure that we have the best representation, whether it's internal or hiring external resources. Thank you.
Let's get both of these candidates a warm round of applause. And you are excused if you would like to have a seat or proceed outward. Great. Now we're going to move on to the second part of our evening, and we'll begin with opening statements. Each candidate will have a chance to do a two-minute opening statement. We'll begin with Mr. O'Connell.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Delio O'Call, and it's a pleasure to be here with you this evening. I want to thank the Women League of Voters for putting on this wonderful event. For those of you who do not know me, I was born in New York and raised in Ireland. I've been a resident for over 20 years in this great city. I love Huntington Beach. I love its quality of life. I want to protect it and enhance it. Some of the things that I believe are very important to our city is our public safety. I know how important our public safety is, the quality of our life. I've been a victim of crime in our city. At times in our city, we have one police officer per 20,000 citizens. To that, to me, this is totally unacceptable. I also believe that we need to protect our business community, because our businesses are the ones that drive the economic engine in our city, which produces the revenue that pays for the essential services in our community. I also believe that our public infrastructure is very important. As vice president, vice chair of the Public Works Pass Vice Chair, I've seen the needs in our community. I believe that we have some challenges ahead, and we need to be proactive in order to prevent extra costs in the future. I also believe that our seniors deserve to have their senior center built. I'm a big believer in that. Seniors are one of the ones that built this great city, and I think it's time for our senior center to be built. I also believe that we need to address the traffic and the high density in our community. I would really appreciate your support. I have a lot to offer, and I'm a person of action. I started an organization over 16 years ago where we've taken over 3,000 homes from the rural off the streets, very involved in our community of colonists. I know how to get things done, and I believe that I can get it done for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connell. Mr. Peterson?
Well, thank you, everyone, for having us here tonight. My name's Eric Peterson, running for city council. I grew up here, and my wife and I own a home here. She's a teacher in the school district. I have a business here. Both my sons are a 10 marine, a freshman and a senior. So I'm very invested in this community. I love this community. I love the suburban beach community we all love and moved to to stay here. I don't want to see it turn into Santa Monica. I don't want to see overcrowding in our streets. I want the government to get back to the basics of providing for the public safety, maintaining our current infrastructure, improving it, and doing this all within a good budget, and then having an economic environment that doesn't burden our citizens, that brings good businesses, white-collar jobs to our city, not retail jobs. Something where people could actually live and work in Huntington Beach. Only 11% of our city works outside the city, or works inside the city. The rest of them leave. So we need the better jobs here without impacting our community. You know, some good jobs, the thing down on the beach, the Hoagie Expansion, gorgeous facility, and it brought those good jobs. So in the next few years, we're going to be going over our general plan. I want to be a part of that. I want to be your voice there at the general plan to build a community that we all love and that we all want to retire in, to make sure the senior center gets built. I want to retire, I want to use it one day when I'm old and retired, but really have the vibrant community that we all lived in, or that we all moved here for, and we all expect. We pay a lot to live here, and we deserve the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Mr. Posey?
Hi, good evening. Thanks for coming. My name is Mike Posey. I live on Main Street. Been there for 15 years since my wife, Jeannie. Living on Main Street gave us a front-row seat to the Fourth of July Parade, and from watching the parade gave us, gave me the inspiration to get involved in the city. My first involvement was serving for a couple of years on the Fourth of July Executive Board for the parade organization, and lately I've been planning commissioner. As planning commissioner, I've been responsible for helping bring some economic development to the city. We do need economic development to pay with bills. Like Eric was saying, only 11% of our employees, or only 11% of our residents live in Huntington Beach, work in Huntington Beach. 89% commute out, and another 80% or so commute in. We need to work on attracting more jobs here, and as your planning commissioner, we've been able to do that. We've got a couple of hotels, a couple of Pacific Cities on track. There are other things that are happening, too. As a city councilman, what I would do is establish a business executive roundtable to get business leaders, community leaders together, to talk to businesses that are here, make sure that they're going to stay as they grow, they stay in Huntington Beach. And as businesses want to come here, we make sure that we get those businesses here. We have a lot of people moving in with the beach out of their quarter-specific plan. It'd be nice if those people that live here worked here, and the traffic would be less impacted if they're working in town and not out of town. The other thing that's really important to me, too, is tourism. I would work very hard to bring tourism to the beach. One of the things that we really missed out on was a Russell and Steele car auction. That should be at the beach. Nothing like having a classic car auction on the beach with the Hilton and the Hyatt and the Uppercost Hotel looking right at it. Car auctions that bring in millions of dollars in sales, a lot of money in sales tax revenue to the city, and low impact for the police. I would work very hard to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Mr. Wilson?
Hi, my name is Mark McSweeney. I began my civic involvement back in 2001 through the Bolsa Chica Land Trust. One of their flyers landed on my doorstep inviting me to a neighborhood meeting to discuss the nearby share property. The same person published a burnout flyer, but I attended the meeting, and soon I found myself spearheading a successful, decade-long effort to scale back that project to preserve sensitive habitats on site. A rep fight involved attending many, many public hearings, and I quickly became disillusioned by the whole process, by the poor quality of data on the record, and by the fact that decision-makers weren't even bothered to read the material or understand the legal framework for making their decisions. That sort of sloppiness of really big decisions greatly bothered me, so I decided to step out my civic involvement. So back in 2009, 2010, I served on the City Charter Review Commission. And then, for the past four years, I've served on the City Planning Commission as county board members of 28. And I'm here before inviting a city council. How the heck did that happen? I constantly ask myself. Long story short, my election platform consists of three main career reaps. To balance responsible growth with quality of life, to protect our park species and open space, and to constantly advocate for open and transparent development. Now, I'll admit that I'm not the smoothest public speaker, but hey, it's not like City Hall needs any more silver-tongued devils. I promise, I promise that I will continue to say what I mean, mean what I say, and always tell it like it is. I'm not doing this as any stepping stone to higher office. I do this because I want to see the place that I call home, a well-reasoned public policy in the best, long-term interest of the city. I believe I have the necessary integrity, experience, and vision to serve the city well, and I humbly ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy? Do you have to hold your own clothes? I'm so sorry, Tony.
Hello, I'm Brendan Kenny. I'm the new lead that's running. I love this city. I moved to this city when I was twenty-four years old, and I fell in love with it. I've always raised to be proactive, and I want to be proactive for the city. I've noticed through all the city council meetings, I sat there and listened, that there's actual, a lot of the citizens don't really know what's going on, and I really want to be proactive with it and get to reach out to the people that aren't, that aren't always there, not watching it. I need, I want to find ways, creative ways, to get more people, more citizens involved in our community, so we can stop all these banings and all these non-creative ways to fix our issues. We need people in city council to come up with more creative ways to help the city. And I don't want this city to turn into an urban or a huge city, it's a beat city. We need responsible growth, we need responsible buildings. I really want to find more ways to get tech companies to shut up, I mean, not shut, to set up businesses here in town, where we have people working, and they're getting over a hundred K salary a year, two hundred K, and they're living in this community world. They're not building giant buildings. And they're having their lunch breaks at all the local great restaurants we have here, spending their nights at the awesome bars that we have down here, and enjoying the lifestyle Huntington Beach, and keep Huntington Beach a surf city, and not let this get destroyed into a Santa Monica or Venice Beach. This is a surf city, it needs to stay a surf city. And I'm Brendan Kenny, and I really love your guys.
Thank you. Mrs. Summata?
Hi, I'm Lynn Summata. Thank you to the University Women in California Women's League of Voters tonight for this evening. I graduated from Huntington Beach High School, and then went to UCLA to receive my bachelor's, and then on to the University of San Diego for my law degree, and I'm a business and real estate transactional attorney. I've always been involved in community service, and I've done pro bono services for homeless veterans. I was one of the initial volunteers at San Diego Superior Court for homeless and battered women, helping them obtain restraining orders. And when I moved back here with my husband, who I've been married to for twenty-six years, he's here tonight, Brett, to Huntington Beach in nineteen ninety-six, I found the need to get involved in this community, and that was because our daughter was diagnosed with autism, and this was a time when there was a great deal of litigation going on against school districts. And because I was an attorney, I was approached by other parents and asked to see the school districts for better services. But that's not who I am. I believe that we should work together for common goals when there are problems in our society, and so instead I worked with the districts, and we put on roundtable discussions and different activities to bridge the gaps between the two different parties, and channel funds away from litigation into better services. I've served on the Investment Advisory Committee here in Huntington Beach, and currently serve on the Planning Commission. And some of my goals for the city are to make this a more business-friendly environment. We need to attract and retain business, and put policies in place to make sure that happens, streamlining permits, for instance, and getting rid of a lot of fees that we have now, incentivizing businesses. We need to reduce our debt, work on our unfunded pension liabilities, a big goal of mine. I really would like to also work on the development, as others have said today, we are building out way too fast in terms of these large-scale apartment buildings. We need to work on that, slow that way down. I want to increase transparency, make sure government's accountable and listening to the people. We work for you, the taxpayers. And so that's something I'm very interested in opening up. I want to see the bill, the senior center built as well. I want to use my "thank you so much, Lynn Summata."
Thank you. Mrs. Devlin?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here and supporting us this evening. My name is Barbara Delblaze. I moved to the community about forty years ago, raised my family here, and I was fortunate to have my business here as well. I'm a real estate broker, thirty-eight years, and I advocate for my city every single day. I love Huntington Beach, and we're so fortunate to live here. And I do believe that one of the reasons I decided to run is about twelve years ago, I've served on an infrastructure committee, and I've served for two years and learned a great deal about the workings of the city. And you know, infrastructure's not very sexy, it's underground law and roads and sidewalks and things like that, but I will tell you, it propelled me on to other things. I've been a longtime member of the Huntington Beach Chamber of Commerce, and one of the reasons I've been passionate about that membership is they really reach out and try and to attract new businesses. And I think the goal as a city councilwoman would be to help businesses come to our community in an easier fashion and not make it so difficult with red tape, and create more red carpet. The other passion that I have is after the infrastructure committee, I was fortunate to also serve on the Huntington Beach Marketing and Visitors Bureau. And why that's so important, I believe today, is tourism has become very, very important in our community. We're a destination resort now, and the tourism that we have in our community today will fund and bring revenue to a lot of the new ideas and innovation that we want to bring to the city. We must hire more police officers, so we must have better public safety, and along those lines, incentivizing businesses to come here. And as I mentioned about the infrastructure, we also need to really get connected. My passion is public safety, economic development, and connectivity. So we can fix our roads and our street, but we also need to improve our broadband. And I appreciate your time tonight. My name is Barbara Delblaze. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Burton?
Hello, I'm Connie Boardman. I'm running for reelection to the Huntington Beach City Council. I've had the honor to be on the council from 2000 to 2004, and then from 2010 to the present, and during that time, I have been mayor twice. In addition to serving on the council, I'm a professor of biology at Cerritos Community College in Norwalk, where I've taught for twenty-three years. Given my background in biology, when I moved into the community in nineteen ninety-one, I focused my community involvement around the Bolsa Chica issue, and I'm proud to say that I am past president of the Bolsa Chica Land Trust and have served in that position for two terms. As a councilwoman, I have supported efforts to clean up our ocean water, such as diverting our urban runoff to the sanitation district so it can be treated prior to being discharged into the ocean. I cast a deciding vote to ensure our wastewater was as clean as possible prior to being discharged into the ocean. As mayor, I helped lead the city's successful fight to save the fire rings on our beaches, an eighty-year tradition here in Huntington Beach. In addition to protecting our natural resources, I want to protect some of our most vulnerable senior citizens in Huntington Beach by supporting zoning that keeps senior mobile home parks, senior parks, where the residents have established community support networks. I am concerned with the recent pace of development along Beach and Edinger. I voted against the huge project at Beach and Ellis, and voted to increase fees on developers so they pay their fair share towards mitigating the impacts of their developments on our residents. Mayor Pro Tem Shaw and I successfully brought a proposal to the council to slow this development down. Focus on improving traffic and infrastructure requires greater public participation in the approval process. These measures will slow the developments on Beach and Edinger. I'm happy to report that the city has recovered from the largest recession since the Great Depression. All of our revenues are back up above pre-recession levels, and in the last two years, we have funded seven additional police positions and two community service officers. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Posy?
I'm a reformed trial lawyer, so I tend to stand. But I promise you, in three and a half weeks, you're not going to have to look at those signs anymore. My name's Alexander Wolfski. I'm number four on the ballot, asking you to vote for four on November four. A slogan I got from my wife, Ellen, my wife of thirty-seven years, who's sitting there, and I adopted it. Quality, safety, and responsibility to voters are what this election should be about. This is a take-back Huntington Beach election. This is a time for change. My background is as an elementary school teacher, a prosecutor, a university professor at USC now, but for the most of my career, I've been a trial lawyer or a professional mediator. The last twenty-one years as a professional mediator, private judge, arbitrator, Judge for the Superior Court, and federal court settlement officer. I know how to bring parties together. I have represented governments, I have prosecuted cases for governments, and I have mediated cases with governments, with governments as the respondent or the defendant, police agencies, and virtually every form of government, including the construction plan brought by this city in connection with the facility that we are sitting in. I mediated that to successful resolution. I can bring parties together, but right now, we have to talk about what's broken, because we have to fix what's broken. The reason I'm running for a job that I don't need and a salary that I won't take is because this town has been in the hands of a few special interests for a long time. The special interests marshal individuals onto the city council and then handpick, handpick their planning commissioners, and you get this cycle of personal agendas and growth that is going to turn this city into Hermosa Beach, and we deserve better than that. I support public safety. I have a sheriff reserve identification, professional reserve identification in my pocket. I'm endorsed by the district attorney, but I have no special interest endorsements. I'm not endorsed by police and fire, the chamber only adores chamber members. I make no promises to unions. Over time, we'll be controlled in this town if I'm elected.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
Hello, my name is Mary, my name is Joe Shaw, I'm the mayor pro tem. I've worked in nonprofit public relations for over thirty years, owned small businesses, and been a longtime community volunteer. I'm currently serving as president of the Bolsa Chica Land Trust. I'm running for reelection to continue the progress that we've made over the last four years. As we recover from the Great Recession, our economic vitality has allowed us to hire seven more police officers, two community service officers, and restore funding for lifeguards. In our latest budget, we restored funding for the Shipley Nature Center, children's summer camp, youth sports grants, library books and materials, and four million dollars for our new senior center. Like many of you, I've been concerned about the pace of development along Beach and Edinger, Boulevard, the city council in early October passed a proposal sponsored by councilwoman Connie Boardman and myself that will slow down the pace of development, provide greater public input on these projects, and enable us to focus more on improving traffic and infrastructure. I also want to continue our environmental progress. Visitors to our beaches spend nearly one million dollars a day, and forty-five hundred jobs depend upon tourism in Huntington Beach. That's why taking measures that protect and support pristine ocean and beaches are very important to our city. Finally, we're paying off several of our unfunded liabilities earlier than scheduled. These measures will save taxpayers seventy million dollars over the next twenty-five years. This kind of forward-thinking fiscal policy has enabled the Fitch Rating Service to give us a triple-A rating, higher than many other California cities. Four years ago, I ran on a platform of putting our residents first. Since then, I've worked to protect seniors and mobile home parks, make our downtown more family-friendly, fought unbalanced development in our neighborhoods, fighting to preserve the Little League fields and the open space at La Barden Park, and I fought high-density development at the Land School site. Our city is moving forward, and our quality of life is improving. Let's continue our progress and make Huntington Beach an even better place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes opening comments and statements. We're going to go ahead and begin with question number one, and Mr. Peterson, you will begin. Unfortunately, it's a rather long question, and we only have a minute, but I'm happy to repeat it at any point. The Edinger Beach Corridor development has raised concerns about unmanageable population growth and traffic congestion. Would you propose any modifications to the specific plan? If so, what modifications would you propose, and how would you propose to attain these modifications?
Yes, there's, there is a lot of population growth in that plan. It was originally sold to the city council as a good mixed-use, but what we're getting is a strip mall with apartments. I think what we need to do is go back into that plan and make sure that we have a good balance of commercial and residential, if there's residential, or commercial, or corporate offices, that the percentages are a lot better. I think we need to do a lot better on traffic mitigation. I believe we need better setbacks from our roads so these buildings aren't coming up to our streets. All of this has to be done within the specific plan, and it's up for review, and I want to be a voice there to make sure that this stays a nice suburban community, and we don't have tall buildings going down the beach and a lot of traffic.
Thank you. Mr. Posey?
The Beach and Edinger Corridor specific plan was originally engineered to take the density of thirty-five units per acre to up to a hundred units per acre. I think most of the people are concerned about the Beach and Ellis, a land plan, project that has a suddenness to a lot of the other buildings that come straight up to the sidewalk. As your city councilman, I would work towards getting better setbacks, maybe even a little bit less density. But if we put it into perspective, we have nineteen hundred apartments being built or permitted. Nineteen hundred apartments represents maybe four thousand people, which represents about a two percent increased population. So we do need to take a look at it, but also put it into perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wismann?
Yeah, density by itself is either, is neither good nor bad, but what's important to me is whether city infrastructure and city services can scale to meet the approved density. And what councilmembers, Boardman and Shaw recently did to slow the plan down, they also asked staff to revisit certain assumptions and do some research studies to see whether we are meeting some of those assumptions that calls for plan for performance. If it's not working the way we thought it would, well, then, yes, we need to make changes. We can look at reducing some of the height, and we certainly need to look at improving some of the setbacks. I voted against the Monstrous Beach Ellis, and every time I drive by it, I'm rewinding why I voted no. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy?
Yes, it looks like a huge mess that happened, and it really needs to be looked into some more, and there shouldn't be complexes going up where there's not ample parking, and there should be a good space between roads and the apartment complexes, it shouldn't just be rolling right up to the streets. That all needs to be looked into. And it's, I mean, that whole area's a mess, it just, it really needs to be more accountability on everybody that started putting that plan together, and let's fix it and clean it up, and let's make sure it doesn't happen again.
Thank you. Mrs. Summata?
Thank you. Well, you know, I think one of the biggest problems with it is, is that we didn't have enough public input in putting the plan together in the first place, and so on a going-forward basis, I would like to do more aggressive outreach to the public to become involved when we do plans like this. We're updating the general plan right now, so we need to make sure we have a lot of people involved. I would want to see more of the modifications, more setbacks right on the street, right on the sidewalk. That's not good, it's not safe, and especially if you're on a very busy street like Beach Boulevard. Also, we need, definitely need to have more parking. We've been talking with residents of Velatera recently, and the parking there is a nightmare, and that's the first one online with these types of projects, so that's going to be a huge problem. We need to work on that as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Devlin?
Thank you. Yeah, I think it is time to review the plan. I was fortunate to be on the planning commission when a lot of this was discussed, and I will share with you folks, over three to four years, there was many, many public hearings here at the library and at City Hall. I do believe that we do need to tweak the plan, traffic mitigation is vital to keep our boulevards flowing. And I also think we can do a better job of attracting more businesses, and I would like to see us work to improve the plan. I think the, you know, slowing it down, taking a leather look at it will be wise, because remember, the reason this was brought upon us to begin was, was to get rid of the blighted areas on Beach Boulevard and Edinger, and there were many. And, you know, we forget that a lot of stuff, there's like a perfect storm here, a twenty-year plan is being built in three years, so obviously something needs to be tweaked. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Burton?
Cleaning up tired strip malls on Beach and Edinger was a great goal. Unfortunately, if the developers complied with the plan, they'd get expedited permitting, which cuts public input out of the process. At the last meeting, council voted five to two to support the items that Mayor Pro Tem Shaw and I brought forward that will increase public participation in the process. The original plan had a trigger point of forty-five hundred units, nine thousand more residents basically on Beach and Edinger before a reevaluation could occur. The measure that we brought forward lowered that to two thousand, and the council ultimately agreed that twenty-eight hundred would be the appropriate number prior to a reevaluation. During the reevaluation process, no more development will move forward. Another thing that's happening right now is the land values are rising to the point that some of our car dealers are thinking of selling to apartment developers. That would be devastating for the economy of the city. Residential development does not pay for itself Residential development does not pay for itself in the amount of property tax generated versus the services the residents require, so we need to make sure that we can preserve our car dealerships on beach.
Thank you.
Too little, too late, councilwoman. Beach Edinger corridor is a joke and the last, the late effort to modify it and address it is the direct result of participating in these forums. Without these forums, you wouldn't have seen those bills. It was inadequate oversight by this city council, these incumbents, the planning commissioners and the past planning commissioners that are speaking to you and giving you a lot of excuses. It is a failure. It is not a success. It was a success and they've turned it into a failure. What has to happen now? Exactly what it started, so thank you both for that. And a forward look to make sure we have setbacks, we have quality, we have adequate parking and we are consistent with the beach spirit of Huntington Beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
Yes, as I said earlier, the city council voted five to two and councilmember Connie Boardman and I had my proposal to revisit the Beach Edinger specific plan. We're going to require more traffic studies. We're going to require public review of the new projects instead of allowing them by law, which this plan allows them. This is going to slow down the pace of development. It's going, we're going to curb excessive heights. We're going to curb excessive density. We're going to allow the public once again to have input into this process. I voted against the Beach Ellis project because of the traffic concerns and because traffic mitigation and the traffic solutions in the Beach Edinger specific plan were never adequate to the, to the plan itself. This plan was passed before Connie and myself were elected to the city council and so it's something that it really needs to have changed right now as fast as we can. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. O'Connell?
It's very simple. I would have to echo my previous colleague's remark, too little, too late. We have huge problems over there right now. I've been talking to some of the residents over there and when the other project is finished and I also believe there's a 16-story building on the coast to be built in that area. So, my solution to the problem is we have to revisit the Beach Edinger plan, reduce the density and make sure that we have adequate traffic flow so citizens can move about the city without traffic jams. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll begin with question number two, which unfortunately is another complex question. That will go to Mr. Peterson. Oh, excuse me, Mr. Posey? With regard to desalination plant, do you support the Poseidon desalination project in Huntington Beach? Please speak specifically to the project plan itself and to the financing plan which includes state bond financing, water purchase contracts with cities and water districts. If you're opposed to this proposal, are there conditions under which you might support a desalination plan in Huntington Beach? And this will go to Mr. Posey first.
Well, it's no secret that we need water. We're in the worst drought that we've seen, at least I've seen in my lifetime. Desalination is one way out. Poseidon can produce about 50 million gallons of water a day. We can also recycle up to about 100 million gallons of water a day. Poseidon is not just for Huntington Beach, it's for the county. Do I support Poseidon? I support desalination. Poseidon seems to be the right operation. It's been approved by two city councils before, so it's not likely to come back to the city council. It's at Coastal Commission. They pulled their application from the Coastal Commission to do a technical, financial and environmental study for subsurface intakes. That study is underway. If Poseidon gets built, it'd be a financial windfall for the city. There's around 150 million dollars over 30 years that can come to us from franchise fees, property taxes and also some other construction mitigation that would happen, that would preclude the city of having to make that investment.
Thank you. Mr. Biggsby?
Yeah, I oppose the original Poseidon project that was approved by the city many years ago. That would have used the old ATF's intake pipe for the sole intake, killing everything that was brought in through the seawater and causing environmental problems off our coves. The current project is before Coastal Commission experts to discuss whether or not it's technically feasible to relocate the intakes to the subsurface. It may be technically feasible, but they still have yet to analyze the economic feasibility. Regardless of the outcome of that, what desalinated water is the most expensive water you can buy on the face of the earth. The Orange County has an excellent groundwater recycling system that is much cheaper. If we do press ahead with Poseidon, that will raise the cost of withdrawing our groundwater in order for the public agencies to plan the construction of Poseidon. So, so far it's looking like a bad deal.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy?
I'm against Poseidon. I grew up on an island. I always grew up around water. I'm a serf herder. I love the ocean and I always supported the Serf writer foundation. Poseidon is horrible. The company is horrible. It reminds me of an old episode of The Simpsons when a monarch came to town and they sung and danced and said, "All this money, they promised all this money and they ruined the town." Poseidon ruined Florida or kicked out Australia. I believe they're a horrible organization and should not be in Huntington Beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Semenow?
Ms. Semenow? I support desalination. You know, we are in a severe drought and we need to find more water sources and really this is the only thing left in terms of a new water source. So, I support D-SAL and I've done some research on Poseidon and have received positive results. I think the one in Tampa had to do with, the problems were that it was taken over too quickly by the city is my understanding, so I'm not sure that's a problem with Poseidon so to speak. We do have to be very careful about our environment, of course, and making sure that we're not damaging our ocean and I'm sure the Coastal Commission will make sure that that happens. So, and also our city will receive a discount on water should we decide to purchase it from Poseidon, so that's a benefit to the city. So, yes, I'm in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do believe that D-SAL is definitely another tool in our toolbox and as we go forward, we really need to have more choices and more options. And the other benefit to us is in the event of a catastrophic emergency, we would get the water first. There is a water, also a water storage tank. The dollars to the city are at a time when we can long-term plan getting investment dollars from the project itself. And the goal is, again, to have more options. We have a lot of wonderful opportunities in our community, fortunately, with, you know, having our opfer and having the system next door. But what I wanted to leave you with is, this is today that we're talking about this and yes, it is very expensive, there's no question. But I believe one of the goals of a city council is to have some vision for the community 20 and 25 and 30 years out and that's the reason I'm very passionate about D-SAL. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Fordham?
Thank you. Right now, we pump groundwater for $300 an acre foot. We pay $900 an acre foot for treated imported water. Poseidon's water is estimated to cost $1,800 an acre foot. I support desalination, the kind that the Orange County Water District and the Sanitation District are doing to purify wastewater. They're making 100 million gallons of water a day, twice the capacity of Poseidon at half the cost. That's the kind of D-SAL I support, not Poseidon. The Orange County Water District released a financial study showing if they buy Poseidon water, they're going to raise our pumping rate $100 an acre foot, which costs the city between $2 and $3 million a year for water. The city of Huntington Beach does not need Poseidon's water. The municipal water district of Orange County just released its October water supply report and stated that although Orange County's population has increased 20% over the last two decades, water use has not increased on average. We're seeing the same trend in Huntington Beach. Despite our growing population, water use is down.
Thank you.
Two city councils approve Poseidon. Two city councils have failed me. Poseidon should not be approved. Desalination is a good idea. Statewide coordinated desalination is a wave of the future. Coordinated, environmentally safe and producing benefits to the communities that it's in. Poseidon has not offered that. It has not been demonstrated to be environmentally safe. Yes, we'll get the water in an emergency, we'll pay four times what we should be paying for it and we're going to get some money to the $2 to $5 million a year max, max. That's if they pay it. That's if it works. That's if it doesn't contaminate the ocean. That's if it doesn't waste energy. There are many different ways to deal with water. We haven't started reclaiming water other than what Connie just mentioned and that needs to be continued. D-SAL needs to be investigated slowly, competently, at a statewide coastal level. It works in many countries, on many islands, in many parts of the country, but not here with Poseidon, not now.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
There is no reason for Huntington Beach ratepayers to subsidize water meant for South County. Huntington Beach has a stable source of water. We get 70% of our water from the ground. Poseidon has been unable to fund its plant through private sources and now it wants the Orange County Water District to issue bonds to pay for it. And the water district will pay for those bonds by charging us more for our own groundwater. So we, the ratepayers, will be forced to pay for water that we don't need and that we can't afford and that's not for us. Poseidon's water will cost five times more than our groundwater and double to triple what we pay for, for water from the Colorado River. We're much better off expanding the groundwater replenishment system.
Thank you. Mr. O'Connell?
I believe in desalination. I also believe that we should have a backup plan. Also, when it comes to state bonds, I believe in public-private partnerships. But I also believe that the taxpayers should get a fair shake and we need somebody to watch for that. When it comes to the water rates, under no circumstances, what I agree with Poseidon is those that raise the cost of buying water in our city period. I believe that we should be out there protecting the taxpayers. Now, with the intakes, if the intakes are environmentally safe, then I would be in favor of Poseidon. I think with the drought and the future, we don't know what the future holds, but we should always have a backup plan, period.
Thank you. Mr. Peterson?
Well, the water's not for us in Huntington and the water reclamation's good, but it is eventually not going to be enough. The population keeps growing and Poseidon or D-SAL is, is an option. It is in Coastal Commission right now and they're looking at the best way to do it and the best thing about that is they're building a plant in Carlsbad and that thing's going to come online and we as future city council people can actually take a look at that and see if it has a negative impact and then bring that back in to city council to mitigate any of those problems. I do like the emergency water for our, our citizens and the 150 million really is an 150 million. It's a lot less, there's a lot of funny numbers there, but we do get pretty good revenue off of it. Again, that was done by former city councils, so if something happens to the planning commission and it comes back, then we'll have to look at it.
Thank you. The next question will go to Mr. Biggsby. It's another long question, I'm so sorry. So with regard to unfunded pension liability, what specific actions would you propose to pay for the unfunded pension liabilities and future pensions? Part one. In what ways will you engage employee associations to address these issues? Part two. Did you want me to repeat the question?
No, I got it.
Okay.
I think the current council's plan to do the long-term financial plan to pay down the existing unfunded liabilities over the course of 25 years is an excellent one. It's by prepaying $1 million actually per year, you save $5 million on the life of the plan, so we're running, saving $70 million by year on this. So I think that's an excellent spark. In terms of partnering with the employees, I want to see the city have quality employees. This is, say, if we market, cities compete against other cities for employees, but you don't want to cheap out on public safety. So simply quote, I want to see the best public safety employees that the city can afford. Thanks.
Mr. Kennedy?
For the money issue, I really want, like I said before, get more technical tech companies into this community where their revenues will pay that down. And as far as the employees and stuff, there needs, we need to find a win-win. They need to honor their contracts they already have and then find creative ways for the new employees, new hires, where they still get paid well, but it helps the community where we're not stuck in the unfunded liabilities being so high. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, the first part of the solution is to have robust economic policies in place to attract and retain business so that we have more money to meet our obligations, including our pensions. But yes, we need to sit down with the public employees and I think they have as much of a vested interest as we do in making sure when it comes time to pay those pensions, the money is there. So we need to look at different types of plans like a defined contribution plan and I also think putting in place something like COLE, which they have in Costa Mesa, which is the Civic Openness and Negotiations Ordinance, would be a good idea for us to do. And I wouldn't do that just for pensions, I would do that for all substantial city contracts, let the public be a part of the process. So those are some of the things that I think we could do in terms of pension liabilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Douglas?
Thank you. I do believe that we, this is, we're on the right track with the long-term paydown. I know this last round of negotiations as well, the public safety are paying by law the percentage that they can pay in. And I think as we attract more hires, new hires, they'll be set up on a different tier. I would love to see our city eventually get to some, something more like a divine contribution where we can change that plan. But I believe at the end of the day, one of the best things that we could possibly do is increase city revenues so that we can continue to attract quality public safety and have different solutions for that, for the pension. And that would be my suggestion.
Thank you. Mrs. Fordham?
So I am proud to be part of a council that has the fiscal discipline to pay down unfunded liabilities early to save our taxpayers millions of dollars. The city has already paid off one of its unfunded liabilities early and adopted plans to expedite the paydown of the others. These efforts are going to save the taxpayers $70.6 million over the next 15 to 25 years. Wall Street is so impressed with the actions that our city has taken that they, our city recently earned a triple A rating and our bonds for the senior center are rated double A plus. In short, this council has recognized the problem and has a plan in place to deal with it. As far as employees, during the recession, our employees gave concessions. They took pay cuts. And when there are real problems facing this city, our employees step up. New hires right now, because of pension reform at the state level, have a, it's a two-tiered system now and they will be paying one half of their PERS retirement obligation associated with their position and our employees are paying the maximum they can underwriting.
Thank you. Mr. Biggsby?
So our current city council took a million bucks to defer unfunded pension liability or as I would like to say, create some American Express debt and then in the other pocket created some Visa and MasterCard debt in order to fund the city senior center that should have been built a long time ago and should be built through the use of outside funds, to the extent possible, sponsorship. So, paying down debt is good. Creating new debt to pay down debt and creating new debt for no particular reason is bad. And so I, I'm not supportive of what I've heard. That's part of pensions. Our city, our city employees, our city employees should be among the highest paid-for beach cities in California, but they should not have the opportunity to be tripling their salaries through overtime, having a defined benefit plan, having vacation carryover, pat and the nighting. Those things have to stop. That's where we have to partner at. Our employees have shown some willingness to partner with us and I applaud our employees for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
Hi. When I was elected in 2010, our employees were paying anywhere from 2.75 to 4.75% of their retirement costs. Now they're, all of them are paying eight to nine percent of their, because we insisted that they do that in negotiations. And each year, our share of the employees' pension cost is going up significantly. And in the 2020s, we will be paying nearly $40 billion annually towards our PERS retirement funds. So we've dealt with this by paying off several of our, several of our retirement funds early and we have a plan to pay off the PERS safety unfunded liability 24, in 24 years instead of 30 years and save taxpayers $70 million. It's important to elect city council members who will stick with this plan.
Thank you. Mr. O'Connell?
I believe we need to have a professional police force and we're moving in the right direction to pay down our liabilities and with new hirees, to the state, there's a new pension plan for the new hirees. Also, I believe that we need to create business in our community where we can increase our treasury, where we can also help pay down the unfunded liabilities. Now, our police department and the fire department have stepped up to the plate. In the past years, when there was extra money in the general fund, that should have gone to pay down these liabilities and was spent other places. So, I believe we're moving in the right direction to pay down our liabilities and with new So I believe we're moving in the right direction, but there's a lot more work to be done.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you. When I was on the finance board, we did a report on this, and the best solution is a defined contribution. Especially for new employees, that would be the optimal. Whether we get that or not, I'm not sure, but it's going to happen at the negotiating table. They keep talking about paying off our unfunded liabilities. We don't pay them off. They're looking at a number in the future. They just keep going forward and forward. We keep adding to it. Yeah, we're putting extra money out there to pay them down so we're not in such a bad spot, or we're not paying them off. And until we have a plan where we know what our actual liability is and we're not relying on the state and their numbers and their constant manipulation of the numbers, and we don't even know what we're going to have to pay until after our budget's done, you know, that's when we're going to actually have some good pension reform. Until that, we're going to have to make sure our employees have what we promised them and work forward with them and their unions to get a better deal for them, for the taxpayer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bixman.
Yes, as a former business owner and current business executive, I know what it's like to negotiate with labor. I know what it's also like to stay within a budget. Right now, we spend seventy-two percent of the city's budget on personal costs. That's wages, salaries, benefits, PERS obligations. And fifteen percent is mandated by the charter for infrastructure. That'd be little else for other things. What we can do is work at defined contribution, for sure, and multiple tiers for new hires. The other thing that we need to do is, you know, we certainly can't earn our way out of it, but we can take a look at new revenue to be applied to old revenue and pay down the PERS obligations. They grow exponentially. As our agents age, get ready for retirement, they grow exponentially. We've got to get a lid on that, and I've got the experience, finance background, and business ownership, negotiation skills to do it.
Thank you. The next question will go to Mr. Kenny. The next question, infrastructure. Will you preserve the existing fifteen percent infrastructure fund? And how would you propose to make additional funds available for Huntington Beach's deteriorating infrastructure, including bike paths, city streets, and so on?
Can you repeat the beginning of that again, please?
Yes, of course. The question is the infrastructure. Will you preserve the existing fifteen percent infrastructure fund? And how would you propose to make additional funds available for Huntington Beach's deteriorating infrastructure, including bike paths, city streets, and so on?
Yes, I would preserve it. As far as keeping it, I've been doing research on the rubber sidewalks instead of the concrete sidewalks because replacement of them or when sidewalks crack. I mean, I grew up skateboarding, so I've seen a lot of cracked sidewalks, and they've done some damage on me. And so when I saw these rubber sidewalks that other cities were trying, you could still skate on them. You could walk on them. They're soft. And when a tree grows up, you can just pull it off, put a new one. A lot of cities, when the tree grows through the concrete, they have to take out the whole tree. And now you lose some trees, and now slowly, slowly, trees are disappearing in your streets. So yeah, I would like to see more creative ideas to keep our structure in and to improve it cheaper ways, but not cutting corners. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith.
Well, you know, part of the thing is that we need to look at more state funding for some of the things that we'd like to pay for. For instance, the city of Brea recently received a large park funds to pay for their bike trail system. We should be seeking those sorts of funds as well aggressively. And I think that the other thing we really need to do is that fifteen percent that's mandated to go to public infrastructure needs to truly be spent on those projects, not on paying down debt from past projects. So we need to be looking at that. And again, just robust economic policies to bring more revenue into the city so that we can be paying for these. Because this is absolutely a vital role of our local government, is to pay for the public infrastructure, to keep up our streets. And they're actually very dismal in Huntington Beach. We just need to fix those streets. It's one of the biggest priorities. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Douglas.
Yes, I'm very passionate about the fifteen percent. And to Ms. Smitha's point, it really does need to be spent on infrastructure. And I do believe, especially with how a lot of the cities now are being connected, we have a master bike plan that's under consideration. This is another great way to generate revenues coming to the city because as we attract tourism, those people are going to want to come. They're going to want to stay here. They're going to want to connect to the trails that we connect through the different communities. Look at the, we have ten miles of beach. We've got a riverbed that has miles and miles to the mountains. So that's another way. And really, investing in our economic engine, which is businesses, turning that red carpet into red, you know, keeping that red carpet out there so we don't have red tape. And we can really help Huntington Beach thrive and its infrastructure thrive by less regulation, more incentives, county grants, and state funding. Thank you.
Mrs. Ward.
Thank you. Maintaining our infrastructure is one of the city council's strategic planning goals. The city spends at least fifteen percent of its general fund budget on infrastructure, and this year, we're spending more than that. We are required to spend at least fifteen percent of our general fund budget each year maintaining our infrastructure. And I supported the charter amendment when it was passed by the voters that requires this. The city's budget this year devotes fifty-two million dollars to our capital improvement projects, including things like replacing miles of cast iron water pipes. We're not Los Angeles, but we do have some older water pipes. Public Works Department knows where they are and they're fixing them. Staff is very aggressive at seeking out grants. We applied for grants to improve, for example, the multi-use bike path along the beach. And unfortunately, we learned recently that we did not score enough, high enough in order to receive a grant, but we will try again. I completely support our staff going after grants like that. And, you know, as, oh, okay, thank you very much.
I know it's difficult with one minute, Mr. Bixman.
Fifteen percent is not enough, but we should be spending every nickel of it on the infrastructure. If we can increase it, we should increase it. How do we increase it? And how do we get the money? Well, we make this town a bit more business-friendly. We create an ombudsman so that new businesses coming into town will have a single point of contact. We make it easy to stay in town by having another single point of contact. We look at our city as a circle. We look at our city as a whole. We don't look at unfunded pension liability, okay, we'll toss a million over there and create a bond over here and let our public employees double and triple their salaries through overtime. We do a salary survey. We get the salaries right. We make sure we're not spending money over here for the bond payoff and depriving our city of money that it needs for current life. And we balance the entire operation. That is not being done. When that is done, we'll have more money for infrastructure and we'll be able to pay off the unfunded pension liabilities that we all need to be excited about paying off.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw.
Yeah, we are lucky to have had a citizens movement that mandated by charter that we spend fifteen percent of our general fund on infrastructure. We have a vigorous capital improvement plan, and we currently have twenty million dollars in projects underway. We're replacing old cast iron pipes downtown, so what happened in Los Angeles and what happened here. We're refurbishing the Warner Avenue Bridge, working on safe routes to school at Stacy Middle School and Clegg Elementary School. We do have a backlog, but given the current budgetary stance, I believe our Public Works Department does a great job of prioritizing our projects. And they do do a good job of looking for federal, county, and state assistance to help meet these infrastructure needs.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connell.
You don't get a second chance to make a first impression. As a vice chair of the Public Works, I saw some little games that were being played with our Public Works fifteen percent. It's on an average, based on a couple of years. And I would go back to the table and look at this. Some of our properties in our city are being financed, and that's being taken out of the Public Works. That's toward being unacceptable to me. I believe our Public Works Department's done a great job of seeking grants, reaching out to grants, but we also have to develop our business community. We have to attract business into our community. We need to protect our existing businesses and promote new businesses in our community so we can build up our treasury.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you. Like it was stated, the fifteen percent is great. I love it. But it doesn't all go to actually slurring our streets, fixing our sidewalks, or anything. If you look at the sports complex, they say, hey, that's making money now. You look on the books, but it's not because the liability to build it is being paid with the fifteen percent. So things like that are coming out of that, and it's not actually fixing what the original intent was. And I think we need to go back and get that original intent where that money goes to fixing what we want. I believe our economy, getting more money in our economy is going to help that process. And I believe it is through bringing good corporations and good jobs to Huntington Beach, and not just residents. I don't think we need to grow to three hundred thousand like our general plans are. I think good jobs here will increase our funds, and we can fix stuff that we've all paid for and that we all expect living here.
Thank you, Mr. Bixman.
Yeah, I certainly support the fifteen percent mandated by the charter for infrastructure. We also have another source of revenue, too, for infrastructure. Those are the tip fees. It's traffic impact fees that are paid for by the builders. That money's set aside to improve traffic where these new buildings are built. That includes synchronizing of the lights, turn lanes, widening the streets, that sort of thing. I also firmly believe in expanding our business community to increase revenues to the city. As a business executive, I know how to attract business. That's what I'll do. Bring business to the city, bring revenue to the city, and expand the infrastructure. If you look online, Huntington Beach City website, you can see the capital improvement projects that are scheduled. They are prioritized, and there's a pretty long list. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bixman.
Yeah, I support the fifteen percent requirement for the infrastructure spending. Responsible growth goes hand in hand with improved quality of life. Those responsible growth generates the funds necessary to do those infrastructure improvements to create quality of life, and having the good quality of life makes you more attractive for additional quality growth. So I would continue to pursue those on a responsible basis. Additional things we need to be doing is make sure that the city is operating as a business to make sure that our development needs are aligned with the cost of providing infrastructure for new development. Another option we have to be creative is to negotiate development agreements with new projects where if they perhaps kick in some extra money for nearby infrastructure, we'll give them some increased certainty of that's to their entitlements. So we get something, they get something, everybody goes and we help. Thanks.
Thank you. The next question goes to Mrs. Smith. This question is with regard to Bolsa Chica. Should we annex the Bolsa Chica Ecological Reserve? Why and why not?
I do not support annexing Bolsa Chica. I don't think that we, as a city, need to take on the potential liability or the expense of doing that. It's not in our coffers now to have to pay for that, so why should we take that on? We don't have enough money as it is to pay for, as I said, fixing our streets, our public infrastructure, hiring more police to police downtown, for instance. So I don't think it would be advisable to take that on, so I do not support that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Douglas.
I love the Bolsa Chica, but I don't believe as well to take it on at this time. It's not a revenue generating source. It would be an expense. And I do believe that if we take our eye off the ball, which is what we've all been, you know, professing that we're going to do here tonight, by doing that, it would just be an added expense. I think it would be better to invest in our infrastructure and getting our bills in order so that, long-term, our public safety can be not only paid very well, but we can have them in numbers that we need as our population grows. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ward.
If you look at a map of Huntington Beach, there's a big white hole where Bolsa Chica is. It's an unincorporated area in the county. It makes sense to incorporate it into the city. It's completely surrounded by the city. Just having it become part of the city of Huntington Beach through an annexation process does not open up the city to pay for any kind of maintenance at Bolsa Chica. The state has made it very clear they don't want the city involved at all, and they are responsible for maintenance of the trails and the open ocean entrance. And they will continue to be responsible for that. It just, it includes the area within the city's limits, that's all. And I support that. Right now, because of the distance that Orange County sheriffs have to respond to that area, our police department responded to issues out there already, as do our firefighters. So it makes sense, since it's already completely surrounded by the city, to include it in our jurisdiction.
Thank you, Mr. Bixman.
Projections are unclear. The numbers are unsupported. Bolsa Chica is wonderful. It should not be a part of the city. We shouldn't be spending any money anytime we're giving any thought to controlling it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw.
And annexing Bolsa Chica is not going to cost us any more. Studies have shown the vast majority is overseen by the Department of Fish and Wildlife. And it's important to me that Bolsa Chica become a part of the city so that we can understand how precious and vital it is to our city, to our economy, to our tourism, that we can protect and preserve this precious resource into the future.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connell.
I believe that the city should annex the Bolsa Chica. I also believe, from part of the city manager, that it would be good for our city. From what I've been led to believe, that the city of Huntington Beach would receive one million dollars. And being an accountant, I believe it would also add value to the city in the future because of the show up as an asset on our books. And from what I'm also led to believe, it will not cost the city any money. That's what I've been told. That's what I believe, and that's why I believe that it should have.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
I'm not for annexing. Does anyone remember Snoopy cartoons with Lucy and the football and her pulling it out all the time? That's about how much I trust the state on paying it. Right now, they have the funds, and as long as they own it, they'll pay for it. One of my friends did the dredge there. He says, you have a good storm. It's a million bucks for us to come dredge. I don't want the state to pull the football out and we get stuck with the liability. I think it's a great part of Huntington Beach, not an asset, because an asset has to be sold to be profitable. So I don't want to sell it. I want it to be part of Huntington Beach. It's part of Huntington Beach right now, but let them pay for it. They have the money. I don't want to rely on them, their promises. They didn't do a good job with the redevelopment, promising a bunch of stuff after they took that away. I don't think they'll do a good job with this one either. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bixman.
I'm not for annexation either. From what I've read, it's about three million dollars cost to the city to maintain it. It's not an asset. If it can't be sold, it can't be developed. It's not an asset. The only reason to annex it is to satisfy our egos, and we can't afford that. If we're using city police and fire to respond to calls in the area, then maybe we should build a county and a state for those services. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bixman.
By supporting annexation of Bolsa Chica, it's already mentioned that the city is currently providing police and fire services. If people, if candidates have actually read the annexation study, they would know that it's revenue neutral. It's revenue positive. We will not be an expense sink for the city. Terms of paying for the dredging, that's a federal endowment responsibility. It has nothing to do with that. So I strongly support the annexation. It will complete the city. It's part of a whole inner city. The county is trying to get rid of these unincorporated allowance because the county doesn't want to deal with little spots of land here, here, and here. So I think that the city should take it on rapidly to make sure we do it right. Rapidly have it foisted upon us by the county, and the county has to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny.
I do not support it. I think it's adding too much parflay right now, and I think we should keep letting the state take care of it. Thank you.
Thank you. We are coming to a close. We do have enough time to do one more question. However, this question, while we, due to time constraints, allow for a thirty-second response. I don't want to not ask the question, and early it have, candidates feel we didn't have enough questions to answer. Yes, so for thirty seconds, this question has to do with downtown. What strategies would you propose to reduce the need for police intervention in the downtown commercial area? And this question will go to Mrs. Smith.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, you're right. It's done late, right? No, I don't mind. Nice try. Okay. Thirty seconds. Quality of life. I do believe a police presence has made a difference. And I do believe getting the businesses involved, the city involved, has been a way to move us out of some of the issues that we were having. And I believe the chief, that Chief Handy, by having some of the town hall meetings and really having the residents, having their input heard, we're seeing changes. And then I believe also better businesses attracted to downtown will make a difference.
Thank you, Mrs. Ward.
Earlier this year, the council passed an ordinance capping the number of retail outlets that sell alcohol in District One of downtown with the current number. We've also passed a resolution requiring any new restaurants that serve alcohol coming into District One to stop serving alcohol at eleven. into District 1 to stop serving alcohol at 11:00 and close by midnight on weekends and during the week an hour earlier. The police are participating in training with restaurant employees to reduce the issue of over serving. The city is also putting cameras in known trouble areas such as under the pier and elsewhere where there are a high number of bike thefts. These cameras are making a difference and are a very helpful tool for the police department.
Thank you, Mr. Poskin.
It's a law enforcement issue, it's not a regulatory issue. We need more police. We need our police department fully staffed. We need our police department on the street. We need foot patrols, we need horse patrols, we need CCTV. We need to continue the job that Chief Handy is doing. We need to expand the job that Chief Handy is doing. We also need to make the parking lot downtown open and free in the evenings to draw cars away from the downtown residential district.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw.
Downtown is a neighborhood. I've always thought of it as a neighborhood. And the first priority we have for all of our neighborhoods is public, is public safety and quality of life. Downtown is also a place where we do business, so there has to be a balance. That balance was altered by past councils in favor of alcohol-serving establishments to the detriment of downtown as a neighborhood. So we've taken some reasonable measures to limit alcohol serving downtown in order to restore that balance so that people that live in downtown neighborhoods can enjoy their homes and their quality of life.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connell.
I believe our new chief is doing a great job. I believe we need to have more police officers and zero problems. I also like the community working together with the power owners, reaching out and trying to do their part.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson.
Downtown is completely an issue for the police. And with them working with the bid and the ambassador program, it's really cleaning things up down there. It's complete enforcement. We don't need to regulate things. We need to enforce everything we have on the books right now. And with that, Chief Handy has been doing an excellent job meeting with the businesses and taking care of our few problems down there. And I think they, if you give them a chance, they're going to, they're going to clean everything up down there.
Thank you, Mr. Poskin.
Well, I live downtown. I live on Main Street. I go downtown almost every day. I live it, I breathe it. There are certainly a high number of locations that sell alcohol, but there's really only three or four that are consistently contributing to the problems. Those bars and restaurants are known by the police, are known by the locals, and I've spent time with the police downtown. I spent from 9:00 PM until about 3:00 in the morning one night about a month ago, and saw everything firsthand. It's not a war zone, it's not as bad as the other petty things. Thanks for being here.
Okay, it's time. Thank you, Mr. Pearson.
Good public safety starts with good zoning, so I support the efforts to reduce the number of alcohol intensive uses, particularly in late night and downtown. I think Chief Handy is doing an excellent job of a lot of proactive programs to rein in some of the problems that were a long time coming, so it will take a long time to work out a positive change. And on the enforcement end, I think we need to take a more stringent approach instead of suspension wrist slaps. We need to actually revoke some permits for people who do not get the message. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Kim.
Yes, the cops are doing a great job now with the ambassador program, the horses down there. I frequent downtown nights a lot since I moved here. I've seen the ups and downs of downtown. It's not as bad as some people make it out to be, but there is some big issues there, and there is some problem bars. And instead of slapping everybody on the wrist down there, they should go out and go to these problem bars and make them change, like get them with the program, like enforce the rules that we already have on the books instead of banning everything.
Thank you, Mrs. Semeta.
So I agree that it's a code enforcement issue, it's a police issue. Chief Handy is doing a good job. We're definitely talking to businesses down there and seeing a difference lately, so we need to continue to let him do that. When the mountain police come on, I think that's going to be a great help as well as the ambassador program. Also, we do need to look at the conditional use permits. And if we have problem bars, which we do, we need to look at should we be revoking those permits if they're not complying? So those are some of the things that we can do. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the question portion. We're now going to move to the closing statements. We'll begin with Mr. Shaw, and we'll do a reverse sequence. Mr. Shaw?
In the last four years, we've made great strides to make Huntington Beach a better place to live for our residents, our children, and our visitors. From a strong commitment to public safety, hiring seven new police officers and working to keep our neighborhoods safe, to protecting taxpayers through pension reform and paying down unfunded liabilities, while working to oppose and slow down the pace of high-density development, my focus has been on delivering for Huntington Beach. At the same time, I was standing up to state bureaucrats to save the fire rings on the beach, I was working to protect our coastline and open space and fighting development of the last two parcels at Bolsa Chica. I've also worked to protect our most vulnerable seniors in Mobile Hill Parks. I've worked to make downtown more family-friendly, and I've brought back our city's youth sports grants. Let's continue moving forward and making Huntington Beach even better. I'm Joe Shaw, and I humbly ask you for your vote.
Thank you, Mr. Poskin.
I'm a really lucky guy. I have the ability to manage my practice and the luxury of being able to serve a city that I love and donate the compensation back to the city. I'm not linked to any special interest, not one. What is a special interest? Well, a Poseidon that endorses only the Chamber of Commerce endorsements, the Chamber of Commerce only endorsing its members, provides you with promotion, propaganda by independent expenditures. You see that every day, you saw it today. Paid for by freedom from taxes. Came in your mail today, has a lot of pictures.
You can't read things without, I'm so sorry.
Sorry, it has a lot of pictures in it. These are paid by independent expenditures. Independent expenditures mean nothing. So when you look at the pieces of mail you receive, see who paid for it. Was it the candidate or was it some slate that all you have to do is pay a couple of grand? I can pay a couple of grand and join the green slate. Vote for independence and vote for change.
Thank you, Mrs. Gordon.
Thank you. I'm proud of my record of service on the city council and have asked you for your support for four more years. I helped lead this city through the worst recession since the Great Depression, and I'm happy to be able to tell you that revenues are back up above pre-recession levels. I'm glad to be part of a council that has the fiscal discipline necessary to plan for the future by expediting and paying out of our unfunded pension liabilities. We're setting aside funds each year for this purpose, and if future councils continue with the same fiscal discipline, we'll save our residents $70 million over 25 years. Wall Street is so impressed by this, the rating agency recently gave the city a triple-A rating. If you want a councilwoman who has a proven record of protecting our natural resources, listening to the residents of the city and not up to outside special interests like developers, and someone who's planning for the future fiscal stability of our city, please vote for me, Councilwoman Connie Gorman. For more information, you can visit my website at conniehorman.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Douglas.
Thank you. My three priorities are quality of life, and along with the quality of life, improving our public safety. I think we've made strides here recently, and I know over the next five to seven years it's imperative that we hire more police officers and ensure our residents' safety. The next priority to me would be the economic investment. We must, we must roll out the red carpet and attract new businesses that will invest and help them not only stay here, but encourage and have more investment from other, other businesses as well. And then lastly, my infrastructure passion, and not only with our streets and our sidewalks and all of that that we certainly see every day, but I really want to commit to you that I believe as we go into the future, connectivity is vital for our city, not only for our businesses, but for our public safety and for all of us as residents. Connectivity with our broadband and wireless. Thank you. Vote for Barbara Douglas.
Thank you. Mrs. Douglas.
Thank you. It's time for change in Huntington Beach. Time for true fiscal conservatives on city council. For leaders who understand that the intent of the Constitution is for government's role to be a limited role, essentially providing for public safety and maintaining our infrastructure. For leaders who understand that we work for you, the taxpayers, who seek out and act upon your input, who are not afraid of making their work transparent and accountable to you, taxpayers. Leaders who hear your opposition building massive apartment buildings across the city, who hear your concerns about their negative impacts on our quality of life, who will enact robust economic policies that attract and retain business in our city. Leaders who will not thwart the people's vote to build the senior center in Central Park. Leaders who will do the hard work it will take to pay down our debt and unfunded liabilities. I will be that leader for you on city council. As an independent candidate, I don't have union or special interests behind me. I will work for you, the citizens. I'm number two on the ballot, Lynn Semeta. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny.
Yes, I'm running my whole campaign from my heart. I have no money invested, and no one's invested money. I have not taken a dollar from any citizen. I want to do what's right. I want to be proactive. I want to be part of Huntington Beach. I want my grandkids to live here. I want every, I want all my families always to grow up in Huntington Beach and have them grow up in a surf city, a surf city I know. I don't want them to grow up in some crazy Santa Monica, Venice Beach-looking Huntington Beach. I want to save Huntington Beach. I want to listen to the people of Huntington Beach, and I want more people of Huntington Beach to have a voice, not just the people that are already listening. I want everybody, every citizen of this beautiful city deserves to be heard and listened to. Please, vote for Brendan Kenny.
Thank you, Mr. Biggs.
You've heard a lot about where the candidates stand on many issues tonight. There are some sharp contrasts between us. While issues may come and issues may go, it's always character that will drive everything that a council member does. If I had to use one word to describe my character about who would be integrity, you can count on me to put in the long hours that engaged public service requires. You can count on me to make well-reasoned policy decisions that comply with the law. And you can count on me to hold the rest of City Hall to those same high standards. I've never claimed to have all of the answers. My words are always open to anybody with ideas on how to do things better. Let's move the city forward together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Poskin.
Thanks. As an experienced business owner and business executive, what the city needs is somebody that attracts business, attracts employers. That's what I can do. I've been recognized for that skill by the Huntington Beach Chamber of Commerce PAC, Republican Party, the Lincoln Club, Orange County Tax PAC, many elected officials, including Dan Ohrbacher, Matthew, Mayor Matthew Harper, Councilman Joe Cargio, former mayors Peter Cathy Green, Mayor Matt Harper, among others. I can bring business to the city, bring tourism to the city, bring revenue to the city, and work hard for you. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson.
Thank you all for coming here tonight. I want Huntington Beach to remain Huntington Beach. On the general plan committee right now that I'm on, they're basing that plan off 600 people. There's 200,000 people in our city, ladies and gentlemen. 600 people, that's what they're basing it off. We need public involvement. I want to make sure we have public involvement in these plans. I want to work for you. This isn't a lifelong ambition, but I have the talents to do it. I've served you on the finance board, I've served you on the planning commission, served you on the design review board, served my country in the United States Marine Corps. I served my community as a scoutmaster, and I'm really ready to serve you as to your next city councilman. Thank you, Eric Peterson, number five on the ballot.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connell.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for coming tonight. Billy O'Connell for City Council, and I would appreciate your support.